Good evening. Meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, Wednesday, January 19th, 2022. Wacoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall 16, Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. It is 7:00. We are hybrid, in-person, virtual, remote. Wow, I think we got it all covered. Broadcast live on local channel 18. Call-in conference number 508-539-1400, extension 8585. Streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, www.mashpema.gov/Channeld18. Call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, pure and just as for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from our meeting on January 5th. Everybody's got a copy of those. Saw them in advance. Any comments, questions, suggestions, edits? Hearing none?
Should we accept the minutes as written for January 5th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Public discussion. Did anybody sign up?
No.
Anyone?
Nope. Okay. Oh, got it. Okay, let's move to the A and R. Garen Gould, 36 Sunset Strip, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, map 37 block 72A. 21 Emma Oakley Mills Way, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, map 211. To divide a 28,400 square foot parcel from 36 Sunset Strip, map 37 block 72A, to be conveyed to Robert and Rachel Mills and merged with 21 Emma Oakley Mills Way, map 37 block 211. Oh, thanks. Good evening, Mr. Mills.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name's Robert Mills. I believe the owner of the property, Garen Gould, may be on, potentially. In any, in any, in any event, he is a, he is a neighbor of mine. He has a two and a half acre parcel. And he's been kind enough to sell me, or seeks to sell me, a 28,400 square foot parcel to, adjoint to my property, primarily for privacy purposes. As you can see from the plan, it doesn't make his lot non-conforming. He's left with 82,000 square feet.
Comments, questions? Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, so it looks like you're gonna get some access to Sunset Strip?
Yes.
Why would you want that?
Just a second means of egress.
Anybody else? Mr. Planner?
Is there gonna be a driveway?
I'm not sure if I'm gonna get a curb cut permit for that or not. Haven't decided yet.
So greater than 150 feet away from home may have to be improved if you end up doing that, just so.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
If there are no other comments from the board, I only had one, one thing I wanted to note, and I've discussed with Mr. Mills, the, I don't think the plan is clear on the intention to convey the parcel, 28,400 square foot parcel, to the Mills property. Often when we see these formate plans for transfer, conveyance, and merger situations, it's indicated on the plan to which property is going to be conveyed to. And I wanted to raise that for the board, just in consideration of complete technical compliance with the rules and regulations, which ask that any new lot lines or proposed lot lines are indicated on the plan. So whereas the Mills property, parcel 37, map 37, parcel 211s, lot lines will be changing and a new lot line's inserted, I might suggest that the board have that clearly bifurcated on the plan. And you do have 21 days to endorse this plan. I see no other issues with the, the plan as submitted, but I thought that might be a prudent amendment to make prior to your next meeting. So that the conveyance is, is made clear on the plan to be recorded.
Why are we looking at this as approval not required? It's not giving a buildable lot. I mean.
I think that's, Dennis, why it's important to show that the parcel that we're dividing from map 37 parcel 72A needs to be made clear of where it's going to be conveyed, because you need adequate frontage on the street. The parcel that you're creating by way of this A and R only has 25 feet of access to Sunset Strip, but the intention is to convey it to the Emma Oakley Mills Way property that has adequate frontage on the street.
Okay.
So I would suggest that the note, that the plan be amended to make clear the intention to convey to the, the Mills property.
I agree with that.
So essentially taking this plan and outlining the new.
However the survey or deemed most appropriate, I think it could be a simple notation added to the plan in the notes.
Okay.
But just to make clear that this new parcel to be divided is not gonna be creating any non-conforming lot.
Yep.
But that it's going to be conveyed to a lot with the adequate frontage on the street.
Okay. I got it.
So again, you have 21 days to endorse. I would suggest that the board keep this on your agenda for the next meeting and request that amendment be made to the millet prior to endorsement.
We don't have to make a motion with that.
I've never once recommended you don't endorse the plan the first night, so I'm not sure how the board is.
Yeah, I know. Wait till it comes back.
Well, why don't we ask the applicant if they're willing to make those changes on the.
Yeah, Mr. Mills, are you?
Oh, yeah, we could, I mean, I could have this, the engineer make a notation on the plan to be combined with, with the adjacent lot, not a buildable, not a separate buildable lot.
I think that would be prudent then, so on our next agenda, this would appear again, and you'll have an opportunity to endorse within the requisite 21 days.
That was good.
Good.
Isn't there, okay, yeah, it has the note. The other note that we already.
It does, yes.
Okay.
Good, Rob?
That's fine, that's sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Rob, you wanna take this millet with you?
Okay, we're a little early for the public hearing. Let's go to committee reports. Cape Cod Commission?
No report.
Community Preservation?
The Community Preservation Committee voted to recommend all eight applications for funding. So those will go before the Board of Selectmen to be placed on the warrant in May.
Very good. Design Review? Plan Review?
I'm thinking here.
Take your time, we got three minutes to kill.
No, we didn't meet, we have not met since we reviewed the Sherwin-Williams projects. No meeting.
Environmental Oversight, no update. Historic District Commission?
No meeting.
Oy. Military Civilian Advisory Council?
No meeting.
No meetings.
Oh, I do have a little bit more on the Community Preservation Committee.
Good, okay, go ahead. Phil.
So we asked the chairman, Andrew Gottlieb, to start meeting on a more regular basis and work on our spending plan.
What's the frequency of the meeting?
We usually meet when there's an application submitted.
Oh, that's all? Okay.
We're very reactive instead of being, you know, planned out, proactive. So I think that hopefully every two months we'll be meeting so that.
Good.
Maybe if people have ideas or, you know, thoughts, or know something is going to need a significant bit of money from the town's CPA account, that they come forward. There's more opportunity for them to come forward. I, I always just think about the affordable housing stuff. Those can be pretty large asks. But I watch, I keep in tune with the Housing Committee's meetings, but not everybody on CPC desk, so.
Good. All right. Thank you. I'm gonna open the public hearing, continued from January 5th, 2022. Liscotti Development Corporation, 413 Nathan Ellis Highway, map 72 parcel 56A. The applicant requests a special permit to construct a 4,000 square foot commercial building for retail paint sales. This application is made pursuant to sections 174, 31, and 8, 174, 25E1, 174, 24C, 174, 37, 174, 821, 174, 824, 174, 41M, 174, 31N14 of the Mashpee zoning bylaw. Property is located in the C2 zoning district and partially within the groundwater protection overlay district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant, Liscotti Development. With me tonight are Chad Brubaker, who represents the applicant, and also Sam Malafronte from Soli Engineering. This is a continued hearing. At the last hearing, we went through the project in detail. I believe there was just a couple of minor modifications that needed, that were done to the plan, and Sam submitted those to both Evan and to Pesci Engineering. And then also to allow Evan to do a draft decision, which we've reviewed. And I talked to Evan, there just, there was like, you know, a minor modification. So at this stage, we're prepared to answer any questions on any of the modifications, but, you know, no other new information at this time.
Thank you.
I have a question. I was wondering, how come you didn't make an exit on Nigarette or Ave there?
Ninnegret.
Ninnegret? Yeah.
I think the applicant felt that the, the access.
I think it'd be safer than coming out to 151.
Ninnegret's a horrible, tough, tough term, too.
Yeah, the problem.
Yeah, but you go to the pizza store. I mean, a lot of people use that to go to Dino's and.
It's one of the scariest terms I can ever use, Ninnegret.
Well, that's why I'm thinking another, coming off of, right, right after that.
Yeah, it's not good either way.
I think because of the driveway so close to the intersection of Ninnegret and 151, to put a driveway there with the people traffic coming up was gonna make it more complicated.
No, I'm thinking you put down.
Yeah, on Ninnegret itself, right?
Down to the middle, you know, even at the end.
Isn't there a turning lane right there in front of, there's sort of a turning lane to go into Andy's anyway?
No, a dedicated one, I don't think, but.
I was just, I was just wondering, I was gonna ask, last meeting, that you never, did you ever look at something?
The applicant did. There is already an access on 28 that's shared with the, with the neighboring.
Dino's.
No, no, the liquors, the package store, Andy's Market, so they felt that that was kind of the, the best use of that, you know, with there being an existing access already.
And the road's wider.
Correct.
Any other?
Just, I wanted to check with Ed if all the modifications that we listed were on the plans submitted.
Yes, everything that I requested to be looked at were done within days. Sam took care of that within days of the, receiving the letter. And prior to your last meeting, I reviewed all of it, no issue. And then I looked at the current letter you have before you in your packet and the changes that were made to the plan. I'm either. So I would recommend endorsement of the plan.
Good.
Same thing with you, Evan?
Yep, my department's satisfied. I'd like to extend a thanks to Sam. Super responsive, we appreciate that. I apologize to the board for the numerous typos that were included in my first email of that draft decision. I can attest to now, they have all been rectified, and I have a decision here for signature and filing, should you be so inclined to close the public hearing and take them over.
Anybody from the public? Comments? Nope. Pretty good. All right.
Okay, I make a motion, we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we gotta vote.
By the way, Chris, your dad did an adequate job the last time he was here.
You know, he's, he's trying to retire and I, you know, sucking him back into these night meetings. He wasn't too pleased with.
It was pretty funny.
He did a fine job.
And Mr. Chair, just a reminder that you've seated the associate member for this petition in the absence of Allen, so we'll need Rob to vote on this petition.
Very good.
Welcome back, we don't need you.
Okay, motion?
I make a motion, approve the applicant's agreement.
Do we have a second?
So, so. Yep, so approve the special permit decision?
Yeah.
For Liscotti Development Corporation, retail paint shop at 413 Nathan Ellis Highway, Mashpee. How's that?
Don't be.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You were a little kid.
Sorry?
I've been on the boards all along, you bet you were a little kid.
Glad you're seeing me now. Gotta take it over.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Bye.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Chris, before you go, I just, this will be filed with the clerk in the morning, and we'll send out notice of decision and notify you when the.
Great, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, next item is new business presentation regarding status of the local comprehensive plan update from consultants Weston and Sampson. We have Caroline Wells and Ashley Sweet with us this evening. Good evening.
Hi. So hi, I am Caroline Wells. I am a senior project manager with Weston and Sampson Engineers. With me today is Ashley Sweet. She is also a project manager with Weston and Sampson, and she is my assistant project manager on this project. So we're happy to finally meet with you all. It's been a couple of months, and there's been some planning behind the scenes that we'd like to kind of keep you abreast of. And for anybody who might be watching, we're gonna go through essentially what a comprehensive plan is and what this process will look like. I'm sure you all have a good familiarity, but other people may not. So at the risk of becoming a little too basic, we're gonna start from scratch so we're all on the same page.
Perfect.
Next slide, please. So here's our basic team. I just introduced myself and Ashley. We also have Sue Mara, she's a new addition to Weston and Sampson, and she's a senior project planner. And Akzabat, she is a planner also on our staff, she's more design oriented. This is our core team of the people who will be helping to actually write your plan. Behind us is a, is a huge staff of people, including our design group, who will be filling in on the technical expertise and the design aspects and the community engagement aspects as we go through this planning process. Through, for this project, we've teamed with Beta Group, with Jeffrey Max Tudis, I believe he's on our, he's on the Zoom call, should we need him, and Emily Slotnick. They will be focusing on the transportation section of this plan, also with resiliency and some community engagement assistance. Next slide, please. So as I said, we're gonna go through comprehensive plans, generally speaking. This is saying project goals and objectives. We're sort of gonna get into that, but what we're really gonna talk about are the elements of the plan and how we see them coming together. Next slide, please. So a comprehensive plan, for most people, they probably don't have a good sense of what it is, but every 10 years or so, communities should be coming, by law, should be coming up with a comprehensive plan, or a master plan, as other communities call it. And it is a policy document. It's also sort of a directive, a rationale for how the municipality should be working. It's supposed to unify all plans within the municipality. They should all conform to the comprehensive plan. Let's go to the next slide. So as I said, it's a framework for your future development. Actually, I actually had the quote from General Law up here, just to, so we know officially what it's supposed to be, which is a statement through text, maps, illustrations, or other forms of communication that is designed to provide a basis for decision-making regarding the long-term physical development of the municipality. That is legally what it's supposed to be. But there's wide range of approaches that communities can take as they look at their comprehensive plan, which makes it very easy to adapt to what Mashpee residents see for themselves and for their own priorities. And, and how they, they wanna see, not just the physical decision-making, but we're gonna think about the resources that you have, sort of the realistic timeframes in which you have to create an actionable plan. How much time do you have to actually get things done? And also, what are your particular resources? And, and by that I mean physical resources, natural resources, conservation areas, assets, economic assets that you want to protect? And, you know, how can we secure that for the future, at least in the next 10 years? Keeping in mind that this document will be a living document, we call it. It's supposed to be on everybody's desk. That's our goal, or at least on their computer desk, so that they can reference it, they can change it when we find things that might be flawed in it. It should not ever go on a shelf and not be read. Like, so we're gonna keep that, that idea that this is an actionable plan that is very current and reflects current needs. So next slide, please. So this is a sort of reiteration of some things that I said. A comprehensive plan does a lot of things. It coordinates the most updated data that we can find right now on the town. So that's why we've been working with Evan, trying to get studies, regional studies, talking to the Cape Cod Commission, making sure that we have the most up-to-date technical data on the town that we can get. So we're gonna unify that in one place. We're also going to stimulate people's thinking. We're creating that forum for people to actually think about the long-term development of the town. What is it they want? What is it they've been thinking about? What have they observed? What are their ideas? So when we gather all of that together, the data and the, the thought, and we put it together into a plan, what we're creating is a rationale. We're, we're creating that agreement, that this is how we want to proceed. And by doing so, what we're hoping to do is ward off things that are reactive, right? Reactive, incorrect decision-making based on some personal idea that one person might have. It's, it's the agreement that we all have. And so we're also thinking about how land is used and what is most appropriate. And so when we come to that agreement, we can make more rational decisions about what land should be conserved or what land should be developed, and how it should be developed. It's going to help communicate, not just to people within government, but to the town, this is how we see ourselves. It's also gonna communicate to state, state and federal agencies, your funders that you apply to for grants, also to private investors. Oftentimes, people who are big invest, development investors, they're gonna look at your comprehensive plan, and they're gonna say, what does this town wanna be? What is it, what does it want from me? And so you're communicating not just to each other, but also to the rest of the world. Next slide, please. We had a meeting with the Cape Cod Commission, and just to go over our general approach, not only do you have to conform in this plan with state law, you also have to conform to regional, the commission's slate for what they see as regional policy. So you can, you have a wide range of creativity that you can take here, but there are certain elements that they're gonna want, and they're gonna want you to be consistent with their vision. I don't see that as a potential problem. In fact, they, I think they're gonna be a great asset to this planning process. And next slide, please. So how will we get there? Yeah, thank, thank you for taking all these pictures. We use them widely. This is our general schedule for how we see the planning process going. It builds in a lot of time to get things done. So we've been working with Evan quite a bit on amassing the data that we need. We've been going a little bit back and forth about public engagement and looking at the potential for, in bringing in schools and bringing in the Cape Cod Commission. And, and so we actually have the public engagement work plan about ready to send to you. We will have a public kickoff, where we'll be talking about strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats, and kind of getting that, building that awareness that we need to get the community really involved. Simultaneously with that, we're gathering data. Ashley's working on, with our GIS group on, on creating the series of maps, so we can physically see what's going on. We are also reading through, we've got lots of things to read through and distill and start finding different priorities that might be emerging. As we mature more into the process, we're going to be reaching out to the public a little bit more. We've talked about creating a project website, which is really gonna serve as this informational hub. We've determined that maybe it doesn't make as much sense to do that on the town's website, because the town's website is not quite as nimble as maybe a standalone page. A standalone page, we can put on our own surveys, we can, people can provide comments to us, and, and we can react in, in real time.
That's a good idea.
So we'll have the, the website, we will work with Evan and you all to determine levels of survey-type questions. And as we get through the process, we will have more focused sessions with key stakeholders, department heads, that sort of thing, so that we're starting to get the opinions and the institutional knowledge and the observations that we need to make sense of all of the data and understand where it's going. From this, we will start pulling together the plan. We see that as a summertime thing between the draft and the, the finalization of the plan. That's our general schedule, subject to any amendments.
Just a quick question, you talked about online surveys. Are you also planning in-person?
Yes.
You know, listening sessions?
Yes. So we have, what we did is we took the community engagement plan that you actually had as part of your RFP, and distilled the elements into, it's a sort of, it's not, it's less of a narrative and more of a checklist. So we recognize that not everybody's online, and we have, we have a number of constituencies that we need to reach within town. So every opportunity that people will be given to, to having a in-person meeting, they can also have a virtual meeting. If they have a, if there's an online survey, we'll put paper surveys in key areas around town, the library, those, you know, places people frequent. We will be relying on all of you two to help champion the project and use, you know, whatever personal connections you have to drive people to the process. So yeah, we're looking at it from multiple perspectives.
I have a question. You said you wanted to get this done by the summer, by the summer, but we have about another $15,000 more people in the summer. You think we should wait, maybe see if they have any ideas? Because they pay taxes here. They pay high taxes. I think it'd be a good idea, maybe put this off to September and give a chance for the summer people to maybe have the opinion they may not, but I'm sure a lot of them do.
Yes. So we're relying on you to, to advise us through this process, so.
I'd like to see that happen. I don't know how anybody else feels.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I agree.
I have one other question.
Sure.
On the first plan we did, we had, we set goals like five years and 10 years. Is that, is this gonna be set up, or are you gonna set some goals, like, like I see this part of it get done within five years? Because the first plan kinda sat.
Yeah.
On the shelf and got it done, and we spent months to do it, you know, and it then.
So again, we're gonna rely on you to tell us, generally with an implementation plan. So you have your, your plan, and at the end of it, you will have an implementation plan.
Okay.
So it'll have your scheme of your vision, your goals, your actions. Your actions should have some timeframes around them. You need your short-term actions, your medium-term, and your long-term actions. Ideally, yes, you, it wouldn't just be five years. You should, you would have, okay, by a short-term action, we mean one to two years.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and so you know what you can tick off quickly. And that helps build public trust, too, because they know it's not a plan that's sitting on the shelf. It's a plan that you're acting on, and you're acting on in the next year, in the next year. So that's the idea. But again, we'll, we'll create it the way you think it's gonna work.
And when we first did this, we didn't have the internet, you know.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be a lot more, to get more people involved in this and stuff. It should work out good.
That's a good point, and we're gonna pick up on that later.
Well, I think to that point, do you think we really have to wait for the summer residents to get here? If we're gonna be online, they can take the survey.
Wherever they are.
Wherever they are.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
True. True. Yes.
But I think that if they, if we don't have some events during the peak summer months, we're gonna, we're gonna regret that, because there are some second homeowners that have a lot of influence on people who are here and vote. Also, I'm finding more and more that one person is registered in their town, and somebody's registered down here so they can come to town meeting and vote. So I think that we, we, we need to, we don't, we probably have to wait till August, but we should target some big input time for July, and not near 4th of July, because we're so busy, but people get down here, they relax a little bit, I'd say third, third, fourth week of July, have something. And it might just be going to the beach for the day.
One of the things to think about related to that also is to, if there are, and I know COVID has kind of changed the landscape of how we do things and, and what happens now, but if there's like a longstanding summer event, you know, we could be a presence at that event and capture people that come, you know, we wanna go to where people are gonna be. So that's something to think about as well, is if there is some summer event that would be a good way to, to get, you know, the most bang for our buck in being, being there and bringing the, the project to them.
Yep.
I think we should do what John said though, too, go on the internet and see people.
Yeah, I was reacting more to waiting until they show up. I'm not sure we need to wait until the summer. I'm not sure we need to wait until the summer population comes.
And if the people entered your survey on the internet, then we can go forward, you know, but you said you only got 10%, you know?
I agree with Mary, too. We do definitely have to have some community engagement sessions in the summer to capture.
And we can be outside, right? And I'm sure, you know, knock on wood, our numbers for COVID will be down.
It'll be great in the summer.
Well, and there are plenty of events over the summer, as you referenced, that you can gather lots of people at the same time.
And you can train us. We can go. Or you can come down the Cape all the time.
I guess, how do you, here's a, a technical question. How do you keep one, how do you keep from, you know, one resident fulfilling, you know, filling out a hundred surveys?
That's, so, it depends on how the surveys run. So, you can have people register, which is, I believe, a kind of a deterrent, though. If people have to go through the process of signing up, they might not do it. The other, the other way is to, that some surveys that are online have like a, like a key, like there's like a key in the back end of it.
Per computer.
Yeah. So, you can actually see if they're, if they're multiple entries.
Okay.
I think the harder part is, and I don't know why anyone would do this. It's hard enough to get the community that you're working with to actually activate. But if somebody could go on and potentially say they are residents of the community when they're not, and we would have no way of really rooting that out. So, that is the downside of an online survey is that it's not scientific at all. It can only verify maybe things that are already coming up. So, we've got to be careful about what we're, we call it a survey, but it's really, it's really not scientifically accurate.
And I think an important thing for us to do, too, is to make sure that we look closely at those survey results as, and compare those to stakeholder events where we're holding meetings and we're, if we're seeing, you know, a connection there, then we know that those survey results are probably true. But if we're seeing things come out differently in a survey than we're seeing at in-person events, then, you know, we know maybe not to put so much weight on those survey results.
Now, can I ask a question? I mean, not that it would stop someone from doing what you said, but even if not taking people's information down, but just adding in the beginning of it your last name and address. And we can cross that with our field cards, whatever.
Yeah. So, we can do that, and we can, sometimes people don't do that. And so, we've got to think, you know, sometimes people want to write in anonymously and, you know, they should be allowed to do that. But, but I think this survey, you know, rather than, we're never going to say, "Okay, sixty percent of all of our survey respondents said this." I mean, because it's not scientific and there's no point in referencing those numbers. But what we get out of the surveys is people's testimonials and people, what people are writing. And that can be really helpful. People observe a million different things in their day, daily life that we need to know because we don't live here. So, that's where it really helps, and it also helps build awareness. We do everything that we can to make it fun for people. You know, a lot of this is just basic civic engagement and getting people to understand how government works and the sort of decisions that boards like you have to make. So, that's part of it, too. It's just sort of, it's sort of a little appetizer for the public to get a sense of what this process is and the sort of things we think about.
Thank you.
Can I ask my more question?
Yes.
Typically, when you're doing this in towns, like what is the percentage of community engagement that you receive by the way of town?
It's a good question. So, if you've received, say, 10% of your population is generally the number where you've done really well, that doesn't happen very often. It can happen.
You'd see our voting numbers, yeah.
Yeah, we take it 10%.
Yeah. It can, it has happened, and we can get a really robust response from people. But that's about the number that people are looking for, is some sort of representative number.
Maybe we should put an ad in Enterprise and ask the people.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Give them the link and all that.
You know, something to write up a nice little thing about it.
Well, I'm sure that'll be...
We have town meeting coming up.
Good advertisement.
So, to that point, is part of your strategy to get the word out, obviously?
Yeah. Yeah. So, what we want to think about in the next month is the public launch, right? We want to have the website done so that people, as soon as, as soon as we launch it, people say, "Okay, well, I want to go learn more. I need a place to go learn more." We have to think about driving people to the website or just to build, even build awareness. So, that's sort of where our design group comes in. We have a million ways we can do that. We can put posters in grocery stores, and we can do mailers, we can do yard signs, however you want to work it. Young people are much more adept at things like QR codes. There may be segments of the population that we want to go through local networks, local senior organizations, nonprofits. There may be people that we need to reach because they're members of other organizations. So, that's why we will work with you. We want to get you the community engagement plan, though, which is built on your community engagement plan. There's nothing, there's nothing substantially different there. It's just we put it in checklist format so that we can get things on the calendar and get prepared for them.
Yeah, your challenge will be engaging the younger population, I think.
Yeah. I think so.
Would the website be through a third-party provider or we're going to have to provide a server?
Well, we've been going through that. So, there's a number of companies that do this, and that would be an outside contract to our contract. So, Courbanize is one, Social Pinpoint is one. There's quite a few out there that, what they do is they kind of coordinate all of the community engagement activities within one platform. They can be a little funny, though, because they're not as, they're not as snazzy as you might want. They, you know, you can only use this box and you can only put text here. So, that's, that's kind of what we have to work around.
Do you have ones that you recommend more or can you not say that?
I think they're all kind of the same. We're actually internally trying to develop our own websites because we get so frustrated with outside vendors. But we've talked extensively with Evan, and we have a, we have a demo that we're doing on Friday with Courbanize so we can get the latest of what they can do. They also tend to be a little expensive, and they come in like six-month increments. So, if your process goes longer than that, you want to make sure that you're not on the hook for more money, a lot more money. So, we want to make sure we've captured the project and, you know, scoped it out right.
Evan, is that included with the RFP or is that outside?
The, we would pay for it with the appropriation made by town meeting, but it would either be inclusive on an invoice from Western Sampson. We haven't discussed the mechanics of that. Or it'd be an invoice directly to the town from the vendor.
Okay.
But we do have the budget for it.
All right.
Next slide, please. So, this is just what we're talking about. So, there are really three aspects of community engagement that we look at. And that, like we said, that first one is building awareness. So, it's putting things where people can see it, but giving them the resources so they can do so on their own time. Public workshops are different. So, public workshops are, and we work at our workshops, and we tell, we're very honest with the public. Don't, you're not going to come here and just watch a presentation and just go brain-dead. We're going to make you talk, and we're going to make you think. So, we're thinking, too, one, to kick off the project, but as you identified in your, in your RFP, a SWOT analysis is a great way to get the public thinking. And so, what we do is we ask people, usually we'll break them up depending on how many people we have, and in this case, whether we're doing it in person or virtually. Think about the strengths of the town. What are the things that you care about that you want to keep? What are the weaknesses? And we usually phrase that a different way because we don't like people thinking that there's a weakness in their town. But what are the challenges that they're seeing in the town and things they don't like? Opportunities are things that they have often thought, "Gosh, that could be, that could be so much better. I have so many ideas of how that could be better." So, that's what we want to create, we want to catch. And then threats, things that people see on the horizon that really haven't come out in the open public, but they've noticed something. Could be something really simple. Those are the things that we want to capture at that meeting. The second public meeting is a little bit farther down the road, which isn't to say we couldn't do smaller type meetings and public meetings in the interim. But the second public meeting is really on the, on the far end of the process when we have a draft plan, we have things that we've already been thinking about. We're taking that information and we've already synthesized it. And then we bring it to the public and we say, "Is this sort of what you were thinking? Does this capture it?" A lot of times, there's a, there's a fair amount of revision that comes out of that. Either people, it's not what they wanted or there's just, they need more.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the third type of community engagement is, as I've talked about, is getting that specific information from people who know things. So, that could be your private development community, your housing advocates, your housing folks, department heads, that sort of, that sort of thing. So...
Can I have a question?
Go ahead.
So, in the town, we have a robocall platform that we use for storms or elections or what have you. Have you ever used a product, something like that to get, you know, awareness and participation up?
I have not. And there may be parameters of which you're not allowed to use.
That could be the case.
I really don't know.
Not trying to break the law.
It would definitely get the word out. I just...
I think as long as there's a budget for it, you're fine.
Yeah.
Because it's a town structure, but there's a lot of people that, that would reach.
Especially the people, like I actually have a landline, but the younger kids don't, but all the older folks I don't have.
Yep.
Yeah.
True.
You talking about me?
Well, I have one, too, so I guess we're both old.
I guess I'm old and I get a landline, too.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to hand it over to Ashley. She's going to talk about the data and analysis piece.
So, one of the first steps that we're going to work through in, you know, kind of tandem with getting this public engagement on, you know, going is to begin to outline existing conditions in the town, and that really becomes the foundation for your plan. We need to know what you have, where it is, so that we can build on that to move forward to talk about how those things might either get protected or changed in the future in the plan. And so, that begins with that data collection that Caroline was talking about. So, we've been working with Evan to pull together those, those existing documents. We're going to go through those and kind of cull out important points that are made in those documents. And another part of doing that work is mapping. And so, we've begun to look at mapping your existing conditions. And we give you an example here. We've got your land use, and this is existing conditions, land use data from Mass GIS. And so, we'll be looking at doing this type of mapping with all of your existing conditions. We're going to map your historic and cultural resources. We're going to map your transportation resources. We're going to map your, you know, we've mapped your land use and so on. And that will really give us a great foundation to build on, to outline those existing conditions, which will, again, help us, help inform anything going forward in the plan in terms of future goals, policies, and actions for the plan. As part of that mapping, we've, again, we, as Caroline said, we met with the Cape Cod Commission, and you can go to the next slide if you could. Thank you. They have a regional policy plan, and in that regional policy plan, they've outlined kind of a two-tiered system. And so, in talking with Evan and in speaking with them, we'd like to use that two-tiered system as, again, as a foundation for the plan. And in that system, they talk, they talk about, first about planning systems. You have natural systems which would encompass things like groundwater, wetland resources, marine water resources, open space, habitat areas, and those are your natural systems in town. There are community systems. That's your culture, your people, your economic activity, and, which is all kind of critical for fostering a vibrant community. And then you have your built systems, and that's the infrastructure that supports the town, your roadways, your, you know, your wastewater, your drinking water. That's all the infrastructure. And so, those, under those three systems, we have these place, they've defined place types. If you could, thank you. They have different types of place types, and each of those have kind of a definition under them. And so, we've talked with Evan about using this structure to identify place types in Mashpee and map those place types, and then use sections of the plan to talk about and envision for those place types. And so, in the rural development areas, we're talking about areas that have a high percentage of open space. In suburban areas, we're talking about residential neighborhoods. We're talking about auto-oriented, commercial, and industrial areas. In the historic areas, obviously, we're talking about concentrations of historic structures, historic districts, national register locations. The maritime areas, we're talking about commercial, concentrations of commercial and mixed use that are located around harbors and waterfronts. In the community activity centers, this is the locations in your town where we're talking about concentrations of businesses and activity, community centers, really any kind of compact, built environment. Industrial activity centers, as indicated, would be any areas of concentrations or areas of industrial activity. And then military and transportation areas is talking about large areas that are devoted to infrastructure. So, you might be talking about a wastewater treatment or a water treatment, you know, sanitation, those types of areas. So, we'd like to use this kind of foundation that's set forth in the regional policy plan and apply it to Mashpee.
Oh, wait. The message just came up that the meeting has ended after forty minutes idle time.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are there historical areas? Have you, are you going to involve the tribal members?
We, we have, I mean, I believe Evan has already reached out, and there is an intent there to have an initial meeting and certainly involve the tribe, yes.
There are historical areas that we may not know about.
Yep. Right. Yeah, they'll be a great resource.
I've only exchanged cursory conversation with the chairman of the tribal council, but we'll have a meeting with our consultants in the next couple of weeks.
That's great.
To discuss the tribe's involvement throughout the process. Really, the goal here is an inclusive and accessible process that is, involves all stakeholders, notably the Wampanoag tribe.
So, we've seen, you know, we've read the RPP, obviously, you know, we're planners. I don't, have you ever used this before in a community?
We have not, no.
So, sometimes when it's presented, it's presented as one area kind of flowing into another and da-da-da-da-da. So, I find that on Cape Cod, that doesn't always happen, right? So, I'm fine with using this as long as there's that flexibility that I don't have to have it flow from one to the other, just the way that things would happen down here on the Cape. You have these, you, you might have an intense natural area in a place that you have zoned commercial, for example. So, it's, it's really important that even though it's zoned commercial and people have said, "Oh, it's going to be this activity center," it's actually a beautiful and important natural site. So, and this all comes about from the Greenway idea we had many, many years ago. When you look at our open space in town and you just zoom out, you can see a lot of our green, open space is disconnected. And so, it doesn't always flow from one to another. You have things cut off. So, I'm willing to give it a try. If you're flexible with it and know there's going to be pockets.
It's going to have to be.
I think, I think the, you know, because it's introduced as part of the Cape Cod Commission's regional policy plan, but there's no requirement to necessarily follow it in any particular way. I mean, I think there is a lot of flexibility there, and certainly we can kind of adapt things as necessary as we move forward. You know, certain pieces of it are going to work, certain pieces of it are not going to work, and that's going to be part of the process as we go forward. And we're going to be looking to you guys to give us that feedback, and you know the town better than, than anyone, to kind of give us that feedback and say, you know, "Yeah, that, that piece of it might work, but over here, like that, that's not going to fly. That's no good for Mashpee."
Well, and you'll learn from your outreach, right? The outreach will inform the entire process.
Yep.
Go ahead.
The most important thing you said was the Cape Cod Commission. Because when we did the first plan, a lot of ideas we had, they didn't like them, and we had to kind of pull them away. There was a few of them that we had talked to Della, and they liked them, and they used them in their master plan, but a lot of them were like, because I used to say, "This is my town, not the Cape Cod Commission, and we can't actually get what we want. We have to follow their examples."
Right. That's not, their RPP is not statute, right? Right? Like, the RPP is not statute. Like, we have to, there's guidance, there's regulations, there's statute, and, you know, we can always meet with the Cape Cod Commission. We are representative to the Cape Cod Commission. We have a representative to the Cape Cod Commission. If there's something that you see is not working, you know, make sure we know that, because I don't want to get stuck with a piece of our local comprehensive plan that doesn't work.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, but if it does, it's a living document, and you can change it.
And and just to be clear, the current plan is what, 22 years old?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and plans, plans are decades long. I mean, if you look at our open space plan that was devised in 1998, there were lots of lands that we, we have prioritized and purchased. So, there are parts of that plan that we use, and no, you can't buy all the open space you want in one year.
It's 22 years old.
Yeah, and there are, and there are sections of the plan that are extremely valuable. That historic resource chapter has a lot of first-person testimony that was codified. So, um, we don't, we don't want to throw it all out. I don't know if you can, there's some pieces you're, we're not, I mean, transportation is completely outdated.
Yeah.
But that historic piece should be some type of an appendix or something. That was a great deal of work with the community coming.
Yeah, I mean, one of the, one of the documents that we, we, we have and plan to continue to review is that plan. I mean, yes, it is 22 years old, but it was the sentiment at the time that it was written. And so part of our job is understanding that sentiment and filling that gap in between to where you are now. So, you know, for instance, the historic and cultural resources, that's, that's one chapter that often doesn't change significantly over time, even 22 years later. So, we will pull from that to create a new historic and cultural resources chapter. We also want to look at things that do change over time. So, your economic development outlook has probably significantly changed over 22 years, but it's important for us to understand where we're starting from as well and to adapt the new plan from, from where you started. So, it's not going to get thrown away. It's going to be part of that foundation that we build in existing conditions.
Well, because you'll add to the history. You can't change the history.
Exactly, right, exactly.
I'm sorry, do you have?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to, an opportunity just to elaborate a little about this approach with the place types, because this was my recommendation, and I want to put some bookends around it a little bit so you understand. We're not talking necessarily about the transect development, you know, like, like, you know, that, that concept. What the RPP, I think, does a good job of is recognize that there are different types of places with varying characteristics. What approach, what mapping these different place types in the existing condition allows us to do is keep the community engagement and vision work very focused on those specific types of places. So, then we can ask very specific questions about what the town wants to see in a community activity center or a suburban development area with regard to the built natural and community systems. It's a way to funnel the conversation and frame the conversation in a productive way that gets the most out of the community who's engaged in a way that they're able to comprehend. And so once we have an understanding of the existing condition of what we would identify as these various place types, we can have a conversation with the community about, are we happy with this place as this particular place type? How do we want it to change in the future? Do we want to set policies and directives and regulations in place to differ and, or to deviate from that development pattern? I think this is a really productive way to structure the community engagement activities, but not necessarily define patterns of development in the future. It's a structure for conversation.
Good. Good point.
And just one, one thing I want to note, Dennis, I think the Cape Cod Commission recognized that their, their early regulations with regard to comprehensive plans, that they were overly prescriptive with regard to their feedback. They did update their regulations. Now, there's only been one comprehensive plan on Cape Cod that has been adopted under these regulations. But I think there's a recognition that that is a critique that they were subjected to in the earlier years of the commission. And so in our conversations with the Cape Cod Commission, they indicated very clearly, A, that they're very confident in our approach, but also that this is local decision-making.
Good.
And that they've, their, this authority is going to be delegated to the town.
Absolutely.
I absolutely want to hear that.
I just want everyone to keep in mind that while they-
We're behind you guys. You're our consultant. We're behind you 110%.
Go ahead, Evan.
So, I, I just want to make sure you're aware that while they have expressly made that statement, our goal is also to get through this process in a manner that gets this plan adopted. And then part of that is a requirement for the Cape Cod Commission to certify its compliance with the RPP. So, we want to make sure that they're partners along the way in, in recognize, and making sure the community understands that this is our process. But we have a certain, a certain framework we do need to operate under, which is why it's prudent, in my opinion, and I would recommend, an engagement strategy that utilizes those structures they've built into the RPP. Not as a prescriptive, you must do this, but as a, as a means to facilitate productive conversation on place focus, where the, where places are the focus, as a means to focus people's attentions. I just think it'll be a much easier way to have conversations about, what about this place do you think could improve?
Yeah.
Yep. I just want to say about that, I know it's hard to say, but the simpler this is, I think more people use that. That the first one, the only one that used it was Mashpee Commons, when they could see to get something from it. Nobody else used it.
You're making a good point.
It was too big. You got to make it simple, break the chapters down.
But people, people did use the open space. The identification of the land for, for open space purchase was used. I mean, the person who wrote it was in charge of buying the land, so that helped.
It was also bigger than War and Peace, though.
So, we are doing this-
I've read the executive summary.
We are doing this in a couple of different locations in both Rhode Island and Massachusetts. And, and, uh, what we're seeing is kind of a shift from what you have, which is what a lot of people have, which is, you know, a voluminous document that nobody wants to read. It'll put everybody to sleep. And we're, we're seeing a shift towards, you know, that, that information is needed in some respects. Not all of it is needed, but a lot of it is needed. But there's no reason why the average user of this document needs to go through all the existing conditions to get to the goals and policies and actions that are, that are embedded in the middle of the document. And so what we're seeing is a big shift towards making the upfront part of the document really user-friendly, graphically rich, you know, very easy to find things, and then taking those existing conditions, taking all of that analysis information and sticking it in an appendix. So, somebody who does need it can go find it, but that when you flip the cover of this document, that's not what you see first, and you don't want to go to sleep. You can find what you're looking for. You're graph, it's graphically engaging. It keeps people interested. And so we're seeing a big shift towards that direction, and we're adapting ourselves. I mean, Caroline and I have like 30-plus years of municipal experience prior to coming to Weston and Sampson, so we've been doing this for a long time. We wrote those, you know, voluminous documents that nobody wanted to read. And so we're definitely, you know, moving out of that and moving into these, these user, more user-friendly, more kind of average citizen-oriented documents that people can, can get into and understand a lot easier. And that's what we want to create for you.
By simple terms, you're going to put the Cliff Notes up top.
Basically.
Good, well, that's why we hired you.
John?
Oh, go ahead, Evan.
When we also spoke with the Cape Cod Commission, when we worked through the RFP process, one of the goals that I had suggested in the board adopted by way of approving that RFP was the consolidation of chapters and removal of redundancies were practicable. So, I wanted to make sure, I asked the commission, who lays out their regulations for local comprehensive planning, we're required to have certain elements, and then there are, there are, there are elements of the LCP that are within the board's discretion to explore. So, I wanted to make sure consolidation was consistent with their regulations, and they said absolutely.
Good.
Remove redundancies and consolidate where possible. So, that really is the goal. And just like this is intended to be an inclusive and accessible process, I want an inclusive and accessible document that we can utilize productively over the number of years until we reach the point where we need to update it again.
An input. I, I echo what the rest of the board is saying, especially with the Cape Cod Commission's, uh, long-term development plans. And they, they did a fantastic job of, of presenting their plan. And they've designated 12 areas on Cape Cod for future development where, you know, prescribes to their plan. You mentioned as one of the elements in, as a stakeholder, private investors in, in the plan and certainly are significant. There happens to be one private investor, which is the elephant in the room, as I would put it. And my greatest fear with this process is that elephant steps on the people. And I don't see that, that you're going to let that happen. So, the people's inputs and your involvements, engagements, I think they've got to be put on the top shelf, private investors, as large as they are, somewhere below.
Who's the elephant?
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Rob.
The elephant?
Who's the elephant?
I would say, if it, if you need that answer, I'll give you Mashpee Commons.
And I'm sure this is not unique to our community.
Oh, I think it is.
And that's why we hired experts to help us through this process.
I think it is. You'll see that the comments-
It's not unique to this community.
I think you'll see the comments that influence the RPP. If you go into that, you will see that the vast majority of public comment was thrown out.
Every community has a lightning rod, every one of them. It just depends on what form it comes in.
I'm not done. I'm sorry, Ashley. I'm not done. It was so bad that there was, there's been a citizens petition to change the regional policy plan, the first time ever since the adoption of the Cape Cod Commission. You'll also see that people who are investors who made comment, their comments were more readily accepted. So, just thank you, Rob, for bringing it up and talking about it openly, because that's when we say that this is required of us to do. There's pushback to say, this is our plan. This is our town. And if they don't adopt it, that's their problem. But this is our town. And they are a political creature themselves. So, if you're, if there is anybody saying, oh, you can't do that because that doesn't, you know, we need to hear that, because we have political power on the commission. We have a representative. We have elected officials that work at the county. So, we just thank you, Rob, for bringing that up.
Again, this is why we hired you. You've done this. You've been in communities that have the same issues.
I just want to make very clear, the commission is, is not one set that, uh, there's nothing we can and cannot do, and they've indicated very clearly the, the, uh,
Good.
sovereignty, if you will, of the board to, to drive this process.
Thank you.
I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad that they said that, because I think that hopefully they're taking us a little bit more seriously.
And the community is going to drive the process. Your input-
That's the thing. It's, it's the people's plan.
Right, of course it is.
We do like to hear the, the constituencies, though, because they can tell us things about flaws in the process, things that, things that you, you want to hear. You want to hear their experience in your community. Doesn't mean you have to codify and put it in your plan, but you should know. I mean, that's just part of the existing conditions.
Right, thank you.
Okay, next slide. So, kind of on the, on that note, what we're looking to you to do is to, to, to tell us exactly what you're, what you're saying right now. Advise us of the things that we need to hear. So, as we come through this process, we, we will periodically be going, here's where we're at. And then we need to hear from you, okay, this is, this makes sense. This doesn't make sense. You're missing something here. That's what we want to know.
Good.
So, we will be looking for you to review what we put out, to think it, think through it, digest it, and give us your unblemished, unvarnished opinions. We will also be looking to help with the recommendations. We'll bring to you goals and, and actions. We're not going to ask you to come up with that. But we're definitely going to have you review those, help us prioritize those, help us word those correctly, tell us what we're missing. Okay?
Great.
Are there other roles that you were hoping to take on that I didn't put on here? I mean, you're, you're also the boosters and the champions. I mean, we're leaning on you pretty hard to get engagement activities out, perhaps participate in them.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm sure after this meeting, that's not going to be a problem.
It wasn't a problem before this meeting.
I'm sure we'll be having a newspaper article about this, and you'll be getting a phone call from our local reporter.
Okay, bring it on.
We're looking for-
Oh, they're wonderful.
We're looking forward to the getting started.
Yes.
So, next steps.
No, I, I'm not done with the last slide.
I'm still in a minute.
The last slide you went past it.
What are the next steps? What do you see as next steps for, for you folks, next 30 days, 60 days?
So, within the next 30 days, we will likely have all of the existing conditions complete, all of the mapping complete. What I'd like to do is make sure that we have an accepted engagement plan, that you all have reviewed it, that you're good with it. Be great if we could get some dates on the calendar in the next couple of weeks so that we know what the next couple of months looks like. We can all prepare. So, that's what I'd like to get done as our next steps. And then, you know, once the process goes, kind of chugs along and does its own thing, and as long as we have our calendar set up and we know what we're gearing up for next, it, it just keeps going until, until we're done.
How's the data collection going? Are you getting what you need? Are there significant gaps?
Not thus far. We haven't really dug deep. We've had a little bit of issue, because usually when we collaborate with towns and also our subconsultants, we, we create it like our communal web space where we dump things into. Had a little bit of issues on that, that we're still working through, just an IT issue.
Shocking.
But that's about, that's the only hangup we've had so far.
Has been resolved, though.
Now, you said that-
Has it? Excellent.
You were working on your own GIS issues. Could our GIS coordinator in town, do you have any assistance when it comes to that information?
Yeah, well, you contacted-
He's provided all the necessary-
Evan put us in touch, and he's, he's given us his data, and so we're going to, we're beginning to look through that and see what we have and what we might be missing. And then, you know, as I said, we're going to start mapping those, those existing condition areas.
But you're touching on a good point, which is we've had with other land use analyses that we have been doing is that MASH-GIS actually changed how it codifies land uses. So, while we'd love to map Mashpee over time, over the decades, so that we can see where development is happening, because they changed those land use codes, we can't do that.
That makes sense.
It's a little frustrating.
Yeah, from 2005 to 2016, they did some reclassifying. And so when you try to make a, you know, a one-to-one comparison, you get numbers that, that clearly don't make sense.
Yeah.
And that's because what was contained in that first classification is not the same as what's contained in the 2016 classification. And so things shifted around, and your numbers are, are, you know, they're not comparable numbers. So, we're coming up with ways to, to address that and essentially, you know, presenting 2005 data and also presenting 2016 data, but showing that, that clearly there is some, there's some missing, you know, connections there. So, unfortunately, we can't say, you know, over time, this is where things have happened.
But 2016 isn't the most recent data, is it?
For MASH-GIS, unfortunately, it is.
Wow.
It's GIS. It's land.
It's land use, and so that's, that's, they haven't done, redone that since 2016. So, 2005, 2016, I'm sure they're working on, on doing that. It's just, there's nothing published later than that.
Okay.
I don't think our zoning map changed from then.
You had a question on this?
Yes, I did. I think that the other, the other thing that we could do is really help you when you do your outreach, you know?
Definitely.
Really, you know, we have a very well-developed, like, youth sports network, and they'll have soccer, you know, games all day at the, you know, at the, on Asshument Road where I live and stuff like that. And when we first started this, Evan was like, I'm gonna take my IP surveys and just, you know, and, and I'm volunteering myself, and I'm sure everybody else. You let us know. What, if you need boots on the ground, you let us know, because we'll, we'll, we'll do that. We do that anyways. We're out and about in the community anyway, so why, you know, we should have the, the, the little, you know, business card about the LCP with us and all that kind of stuff.
Which we have done. So, you know, that, again, they go, yeah, it goes both ways. So, if you see an opportunity, if there's a fair or something, some event where you feel like you could hand out something, let us know. So, we can design flyers. We can definitely get you some business cards with a QR code for the website.
Oh, it's perfect, too.
Good, good.
So, that'll, that'll help promote.
Yeah, I mean, you guys know the best way to reach the, the residents of Mashpee, so we'll be, we'll be asking you for that information, and then we'll supply you with whatever resources you need to help us do that.
Yeah.
Perfect. Evan?
The only thing, other thing I wanted to note before we wrap up, because it came up earlier, is about engaging our younger populations in the process. I think we've discussed this. I've, I've now had two productive meetings with Mashpee Public Schools Administration, all the principals, superintendent, to discuss how we can engage the student-age population at all, for all aspects of the plan development, and specifically the visioning work, you know, all the way from like kindergarten through graduating seniors. So, we have a follow-up meeting with them to discuss those specific strategies, but I figured it would be hugely beneficial to tap into them as a resource, not only to communicate to their parents at home, to let them know why this is important and what we're doing, but also to collect that data when, you know, kids aren't necessarily captured in the data collection and they experience the physical environment of the town in a much different way than those who are generally participating in these processes. So, things like- So things like, you know, seniors who are in the architectural drafting class in the high school can help develop logos. And can, senior project kids can be those boots on the ground. And, you know, and little kids drawing a headline of Mashpee ten years down the road and drawing a picture saying, what do you see in the future being, and it's something they love. These are all things we're considering, and, you know, some of the data is unconventional, but it's data nonetheless, and can help round out the vision work as we get to plan and implementation. So I think the school is very excited about this, I think we're excited about this. And so it's an untapped resource that we want to make sure is, is inclusive. Because I'll say it again, inclusive and accessible is gonna make this a productive and beneficial process for the town moving.
Right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're looking forward to it.
Nice to meet you.
Very exciting.
It's gonna be great.
We'll see a lot of you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. Town planner report.
I wanted to just take the opportunity to update you on where the town is. I think my mic keeps going out.
Yeah, you keep going out.
How's this one? I want to take the opportunity just to update you on the progress being made towards the development of affordable housing at one oh eight Commercial Street. The town issued an RFQ to secure an engineering firm to conduct a site feasibility analysis for workforce housing at one oh eight Commercial Street. And the, the bids have come in, I sent it to six firms, we received five responses. We do have, based on the, the nature of the procurement, being less than fifty thousand, it's really determinative on best price. I do not believe the town manager hasn't extended an award yet, but I do know that the lowest bid came in from Orsley Whitten, who worked with the town on the nine fifty Falmouth Road, now Redbrook Village. So assuming there are no issues with the filing, I anticipate the award would be offered at some point. Hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to connect with him on Friday with regard to issuing an award for that project, get underway for an approval. So we can get underway with executing a contract and beginning that scope of work. It would be our hope to get through the feasibility analysis within four months, at which time we would be prepared to submit to the Affordable Housing Trust proposed RFP to, to select an eventual developer for the site, and we would hope to have a developer secured before the October town meeting, hopefully by September, if we keep hitting these milestones. That's all dependent on making sure we get this contract issued and awarded in an efficient manner. So hopefully, we can have that done in the next couple of weeks.
Excellent. Questions, Evan?
I'm a commercial intern.
Paul and Kevin?
Aye.
Hi. Thank you.